Six o'clock, we'll call feed the order, the first order of business is the question of time.
At the leaders of the United States of America and the Republic where we just stands one nation under God invisible with liberty.
You want to submit a minutes of over fifteen? The motion and a second, any discussion on those? Seeing none, all those in favor, that's everybody, members reports, we'll start with Lindsay. Ron?
Good to see the whole that filled in because it was probably the biggest I've ever seen here at the intersection.
Oh, run a corner, I didn't even notice it got filled.
Well, at least tonight when I went through it was filled in.
Okay, for now, excellent. Yeah. I think someone said, um, last time I brought it up, it's the eighteen wheeler traffic and it's just the way they turn.
It's a pivot for your tires.
Yeah.
When you hit the bottom of it, you know.
You know.
I think it's the soft gavel and steals one of your socks all the time, so it's still a problem. That's what I guess.
We'll go with that.
Andrew Tupperware.
Sure.
That's that same one, that same gavel.
Uh, Chuckie?
You want me to say anything about that S eighty fifty four?
Your report, it is.
Yeah. Well, that was quite a monkey show forever was one. They, um, now I guess nothing but we're gonna have another meeting. And we had two meetings to turn and the vote was brought up to leave it the same because Cornville and Canyon and Noradrock are gonna be benefit from it, so I made the motion to end. Plus, the superintendent says that things will stay the same if we do it that way and I did that, James Hilton seconded it, we had the vote nine to nine, he said an even vote doesn't move. We have the vote, I thought we were going home. Next thing you know, Jensen Millionaire, they got another vote on it to get it up to like eighty twenty whatever, that's quite a lot, and I asked her, well, we can do that. So we go out of that, carried on for an hour. They have a vote on that, have another tie vote, a voice vote, I mean a hand vote, then Moody says, I wanna I wanna roll call. And then they had the roll call, one of our members changed and went the other way, so it got left to eat. Noradrock, we're gonna go behind this guy, they're gonna have a ninety ten and eighty twenty on a phasing deal. Then quite a lot of growling about that, and I guess we're gonna have another meeting about that.
But you guys meet again.
Nineteenth, I guess it was, that's what it was in the three meetings it was, but I mean, uh, I was kind of taken back after that first vote, I, I guess the tie vote you could still bring it up again, but I was surprised they brought it right up within five to ten minutes again.
They don't have an odd number of boards, it's not your problem.
No, it's state statute, so if you had five towns instead of six, you'd have an odd number, but it's three from each town.
Three from each town, it came up even, then it come even the first time, the second vote, then he wanted a roll call. Then one of them got weak in the knees, said, oh, I feel sorry or something, then it goes the other way.
So it was a Noradrock rep that swapped their vote, it was a tie vote, nothing would have happened, you would have been deadlocked at nine to nine, and a Noradrock rep got guilted in by another town. And they switched their vote, thinking that it wasn't gonna be as bad as it's going to be.
Well, because that eight, that doesn't cost, I mean, they ate ninety ten or twenty thousand more for Noradrock's first year than five. But that opens that up, you could be ready to, up to, geez, about three hundred thousand if you went by complete per student count, if you can change the next year.
Per year.
Per year. I mean, Scott, we're gonna benefit the most and, oh, if it would, but I mean, hey, my fault, Scott, we don't know how to handle their finances.
So, well, at what point does it become final? I mean, is it final after that vote, will there be another vote on their next meeting? So. My understanding that this didn't come from Skowicen, this came from Smithfield and.
Smithfield, yeah. Squealing like.
Smithfield threatened to withdraw, because they're not going to, they went to Mercer and Smithfield Mercer really pushed this reallocation. We have the big saga of a reallocation. Uh, valuation tends to say that's your ability to pay, whether you agree with it or not, it's your ability to pay and that's how taxes are structured, right?
Definitely, state valuation, how they pulled that out here, because they have high valuation because that's your property.
But what happens is this committee will vote and make a recommendation for not, if it's a nine to nine and everything's dead and there's no one there, it stays the same. If they make a motion to do anything else, then it goes to referendum, it'll go to voters.
Okay, so the, okay.
Yeah, but this is Skowigian voters, right?
Skowigian will swap and outvote every other town combined. Because they'll either come in your June primary when they also have town meeting and it'll be a gubernatorial primary, or it'll be in November when you actually have gubernatorial, and then you have a separate supply to. This is the only time, that's what's so important about this, we have equals say to the town of Skowigian, we have three votes, they have three votes. Mercer has three votes, everybody has three votes around the table, and if you don't use this platform, then you're.
There's its own time to stop it. I mean.
So it's, it's a big lose and you'll never get it back. Once you give it up, you'll never.
You'll never get it back.
So, I candidly, it may be overstepped a little bit, but I don't think that I have to give my recommendation to you, if it does move forward is that, um, it would be responsible of Noradrock to launch a campaign, especially of Noradrock, but in Cornville and in Canaan to oppose the measure and probably couple in the school budget at the same time and just vote it all down. That's the only mechanism that you're gonna have if it moves forward.
Because this new town manager, I think he's, he only been there short time for Skowigian, I mean, he was kind of crying about it, I mean, I think he, I think he just come to, you know, that they're paying him, but my god, they gets, they get sixty percent of their tax paid by the mill and you get back to oh seven, they was at seventy percent for a number of years now, hey, my fault, they can't build a fire station, they build a fire station up Jackman Drive saying.
Well, I'd love to know if there's the ability for a re-vote on your next meeting as to where.
Oh, I think so, if, if.
Someone felt like they were being bullied or something, I mean, like, that's something that we should definitely.
No, no, I mean, the first vote, Jimmy Hill said, get to the, what was that, and I don't know why. But, I don't know.
But I, I, but myself, and I don't know if I'm, uh, I guess I'll just say it, uh, why would a Noradrock representative vote for this? And do we have the ability to speak to our representative or reappoint a representative for our town? Because I don't feel that this is in the best interest of Noradrock.
Well, she was.
What I've heard.
Because this all, this all took place in a minute. Because he says, we have shorthand. And I wanna, I don't know why he wanted a, a roll call, because I mean, the first two we didn't, and so everyone said, oh, you've got one, two, three, if you count to nine, you make it.
So I'm, I'm not sure what we can do as a.
Um, I'll say no, because this was not anybody that was appointed by this board, this was the representative that was elected, who was school board director, this is your school board director.
So we're stuck as taxpayers with this representative until the next election, wait, wait until the term is up, yes.
I'm not gonna agree with the phrasing of your statement, but.
Well, I am, I mean.
There's no method for recall.
Hey, no, that's what I think.
The current, yes.
But. I mean, that, there was nobody, she, when she voted, yeah. I shouldn't have it, yeah. There was nobody, there was no chance for anybody, I don't think, to look at her and.
I, I know, I, I just, uh, I don't think that's necessary, the way that should be, but I'm just wondering what the facts led into that, this student.
It's my understanding that it was guilt from other communities, people of maybe same political philosophy.
Because she did work for Harold Moe, I shouldn't say that.
Anyway, can we just, it's gonna be something that we need to keep an eye on, it's gonna be very important to the town as we move forward. Um, and, and general procedural guidelines would say if you vote in the affirmative, if you vote in the, in the moving party, so to say, so Jackie votes yes on something, he wants to vote no on, he should have, with general procedure guidelines, the ability to recall that vote because he voted in favor of the majority. That is my position that I'm launching with this representative and the superintendent of schools to say, this is not done. I believe that we have a foot to stand on to get back up and recall what motion to the table. The obstacle that we have is that I believe we'll need a majority, we'll need ten votes to be able to recall this, and it may just be no for not. That would be how it goes.
Good.
So we're gonna have to get somebody that says, I do believe in due process and not manipulating other members of the board.
Yeah, that's gonna be what I have to do.
I believe so, but that's where we are, I think it might be done, but.
Okay, well, please keep us appraised of what's going on, and at least you're both kind of on top of it.
Well, I mean, I was just surprised that they pushed that right, within minutes, it was, I mean, like Plan B.
Yeah, well, thank you, Jeff, for doing your part, uh, Jeff, anyway.
I'll say.
I should, but I don't, so we'll just go kick it over to Richard.
Okay, the request that we sent into DOT about a left turning arrow on the Perkins Street has been tabled, so to say, they're working now with a consultant or whatnot to make adjustments to the like. I think all in all, it's improvement, um, but we're shit, I mean, the buses back channel or whatnot, so, um, communications come back, I'm just going to ask them again to use the bypass of a section that's complete, um, and then hopefully that will go well there. The nature conservancy, they came and met with me a few weeks ago, they've now met with all of the other, uh, well, I say all the other, six other municipalities, they're not including Madison in these discussions. Uh, but they are now telling us to expect to come before you in early twenty twenty six um, and hold public briefings, so they were very resistant to come and hold public briefings with you before. Um, and so now that is something that they have now put in writing to us, they're also proposing, uh, a couple committees, uh, with us involved about municipal revenue stabilization fund for which, um, that, we're not a huge component of that because our assets, their assets aren't here, um, but then also one, a working group to analyze the data regarding impacts of the river and the adjacent landowners, which is far more relevant to us here in Noradrock, they've also distributed this fact sheet, um, uh, which is in your packet, it's available here at the town office and in the seven town offices down along the river. Um, and, and that is, it is what it is, it probably made more questions answers, but I mean, at least they're trying to be proactive and get you things out. Theirgo Launch is an incubator program, uh, from the Central Lake Road Council, we received an invitation from them the other day for next Thursday from five to seven, uh, at Real Estate Office in Waddle, next land is a startup business where there'll be a job board for small rural businesses looking to hire high quality candidates locally. That is Danielle Scermazo, who is a Noradrock resident, so we don't see too many things like that with a startup, uh, in a program like this. Uh, anticipate, but they have selected her as one of the nine that will have a demo date next Thursday. Um, glad investment reports from Choice Wealth, we don't always talk about it because it's not always been great news. Um, but I thought it has been great news, so this year so far for January one forward, your returns on that investment uh, portfolio have equated to approximately eight point four percent APY, so, um, you know, not hugely through the roof, but certainly outperforming, um, what we're seeing at local banks, uh, and that was kind of why we decided to give.
How much you did there?
Sorry?
How much you did there?
Uh, two seven five, two eight. Yep. Uh, the odd report for twenty four is now done, complete and on file, the new crew truck for Public Works will come on Friday morning at about nine o'clock. Uh, we'll talk about the red truck that we're gonna be getting rid of a little bit later. The downtown sidewalk project, that's one of those stale things that you kind of forget about, but it's still gonna be happening, that is on track for twenty six construction, they're still working on right of ways and whatnot and final design, and then that will go to bid early spring of next year, hope tech construction completed in twenty six. The Wood Hill Road Project, we talked about tying in with Madison, they reached out to us, uh, that is done, came in as it was estimated, and so we do appreciate it. Why that tied in and was a good improvement to that short stretch of road. The Ferry Road Project, which is the relocation of the road from current condition further towards Skowigian, that was looking at some major curbing bureaucratic obstacles, we've talked about that in the past. Uh, so Brad Ferrin was able to finally facilitate a meeting with DEP, that was last week. Um, and it was actually super productive when they saw what we've put together for plan already and understand why we're doing what we're doing. Um, so when you talk about impact on the river and safety and all of those different things, I agree to put together a better picture for them. And the idea of a permanent waiver through DEP was more promising, so we're going to continue to follow through with that, um, and that's not a great jumpstart project, but, um, it was a big obstacle that we had, so, um, Ferry Road is moving forward slowly but surely. Um, over on railroad next across from Old Oak Cemetery, you might notice there's some survey marks, DOT's been in and out of there. Um, they're going to be reconstructing and completing a drainage project in that short section. Um, that'll happen in the spring, in advance of that, you will start to see them in town with, um, radar technology that is supposed to be able to go down and identify resources affiliated with the cemetery so those remain undisturbed. That's supposed to happen on November seventeenth, weather permitting. Um, so we'll see about that, uh, FEMA, we've received some more FEMA money, that is, uh, the last two batches of FEMA money that we've received are dedicated for the upper main street, um, project repair, so that's the slump there in the Dodge Lido, uh, that should be taking place in the spring. Um, the roadside mall, this isn't great news, but something's better than nothing. We had that contract this summer because we didn't have the equipment, but we've got the equipment back now, so I said, make this hole in the roadside mall, that's not happening. Uh, but we needed a hundred hour service kit for our new machine and they wanted five hundred bucks. Um, so anyway, they delivered that this morning, no cost to us, so, I mean, there's something, it's better than nothing, but, um, anyway, I told them I would share that with you because, you know, at least the local there was trying, um, I guess to, to keep us happy, so I do appreciate that. Um, Todd and the department have been working with Pearson Leach, that's a company that we are buying the current truck from and the previous truck. Um, and we had accumulated quite a pile of invoices from them, um, in large part because of poor manufacturing. You know, they had some pickups here and there, wiring was messed up, and they'd come back and not fix it and happen again, and eventually necessarily finished it, fixed it internally.
Yeah.
Um, by tracing lines back or whatnot. Todd was persistent, uh, we thought we would have some skin in this, uh, and at the end of the day, we did not, so, uh, they took care of all of those bills and I think Todd was standing on it. Uh, so that is refreshing because quite frankly, it was a bill that we didn't need or didn't want this time of the year. Uh, Jeff McGowan says his thanks for the Spirit of America recognition that we presented them at town meeting, the county invited him up, uh, a couple of weeks ago, he said it was a very nice ceremony. Um, and the county there presented us with the Spirit of America gold distinction because of the way that we do it at town meeting. Uh, include it in the town report the next year and things like that, so, uh, that certificate was delivered. The turnout yesterday was about forty two percent, which is very, very strong for a referendum election. Um, it looks like Noradrock voted opposite of the rest of the state on questions one and two, and it looks like with preliminary numbers, the county measure did not pass. So that will remain in elected position, um, once they finalize that vote. Um, all your big municipalities are in, so it doesn't look like it's gonna shift, but. Anyway, so that was positive to have that good turnout and take it to the staff, we made that, uh, easy. Um, obviously, I require some extra support, and so that's Public Works, that's my office staff, and then I'm part of time folks that come in and run the election, I thank you. Uh, the cold weather gear drive from the library, they collected nearly three hundred items, that was a very big success, uh, they had collected a lot of the fire department here. Um, and the fire department, full time firefighters helped collect all of these items and go through them, sort them out with the librarian, and, uh, so we do appreciate that. There's still limited collection, you can drop it off here, uh, but also thanks to Jeff and Waste Management, again, uh, they purchased the collection boxes and, and provided a little bit of extra money for the program. Uh, so we do appreciate that, that's a great thing that Kevin put together for the library, where who uses a library, what do they do, and this is just a small way to plug in, that will benefit K V cap and also the kids at Mill Stream School. Uh, we had applied for a sewer inspection camera with a locator under a grant through a municipal, that are property casualty insurance. Um, and needless to say, it's a three thousand dollar camera that we now have and they paid one hundred percent of the cost, so that will help us at our local buildings. Um, and then it can also help homeowners when we're trying to figure out who's retiring, responsible for issues, that's now a service that we can provide to them. Um, and again, it was at no cost to us, we will incur that expense and then file for reimbursement, so, um, Tim brought that to the desk and I appreciate that. Municipal funding requests, fifteen in my communities, that's pretty much from Weldon Wilton over into Skowigian. Um, request for the airport support, um, explain what we do, how we do it, what the importance of general aviation is in our facility and largely boils down to life fluid, uh, but it also does serve a large for the number of people that we have at the airport that own hangars, they come from these communities as well, so we do provide that regional service hub, um, and so that went out two weeks ago, I think, and Smithfield has reached out, I'm gonna meet with them in one of their two meetings in December, I also reached out to four hospitals. Um, that would be Franklin, that would be Reddington, that would be Benmore and Portland, um, and all them, but this is a component of your transportation and your care system, uh, please consider us, so we'll see how that goes, but, um, we made the ask, um, and we'll, we'll, I know everybody's tight, but, um, you know, it's kind of our obligation to exhaust that if nothing else. The cost sharing formula committee, Chuck Round did that one out pretty well, I'm gonna see how that moves forward. Waste management fees were flat over last year, we're still trending ahead at five point nine percent year to date. And then you've got your upcoming board meetings, planning board meeting is canceled for December. Um, library building committee, we're waiting on a little bit of information before we get them back together, so that's TBD. The sewer commission will be on TBD, the TIF committee will be on TBD, given the holidays and lack of business, and then you've got, um, some events coming up, the holiday card making P T G craft there, wreath making workshop for the library, the stroll, uh, tree lighting, the holiday stroll, that's Saturday, December thirteenth. Businesses, organizations, individuals that want to be involved in that, please reach out, we had a good planning meeting yesterday. Nomination papers will be available Friday, November twenty first for all elected offices. Uh, any incumbent has already received or assured have already received a letter letting them know that their term expired or the term was created, so. Um, and we will mention that, so it's really in the town website for the open positions so that people that are interested can also, you know, the paper still will be due back December thirty first by noon time.
Okay, right off, thank you. Well, number six here, discussion action on November fifth, general warrant number twenty.
How will we approve general warrant number twenty, two hundred and seventy three thousand five hundred dollars and ninety eight cents?
Second, the motion is second, uh, any discretion?
Yes, and central main port is the truck that we just talked about, right?
Yes.
What did Haley Ward engineer for sixteen thousand?
Uh, Haley Ward is engineer in all of our projects right now.
Just wanna make sure it wasn't more light bulbs on and on.
No, that's Yale.
Sorry to mention.
And, uh, they're also administering our.
Okay, perfect.
They get the road tied today, okay?
Yes. That, this is my report, it didn't get out that way today, but it's, glad they got it done.
Nice.
What's on maniac training?
That is live fire training.
Okay. It sounded more like that, like, like, sorry, that's a boo, what's that?
I don't know about that one, if I can. Um, we didn't really have enough people, it takes quite a few people to run a live exercise at that facility. So we partnered with Winslow this year, Winslow Fire, and so, uh, we covered the cost of the instructor and they're, they covered the cost of the, uh, renting the facility for the day. And, uh, so I think that was a great partnership, because they didn't really have enough people either, and we loosely agreed to do it again the same way next year.
That's awesome, thank you for doing that, that makes it so we can get a service that we don't have to fully fund, so.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Man, Matt, I think it was, well.
Yeah, oh, it's, I mean, I'm on the fire department, if you don't know, uh, and then it's, right, no, it's, it's good, you know what I mean? Uh, I hadn't breathed air in months, so it's a good opportunity to get refreshed and, uh, I mean, it's, it's a live fire exercise, so it's, uh.
Real deal?
It is, it's good, yeah, I'm really pleased and I'm glad that we continue to do it every year, so, definitely worth it, uh, anything else? Seeing, I think you've made a decision, uh, all those in favor? That's it.
Uh, public comment?
Please, Mike. Richard, um, on the roadside mowing, what a little bit was done with the machine down on well, on the hill on the main street behind the god rail, if that continues to do a job like that, that, that looked awesome.
Yeah, it can re-tray out then.
Yes. If you guys do a nice job behind the god rail, I don't know, you know, I know we've had a lot of pickups to get to this point, but if we get that swung down, it looks to be, it'll be a positive piece of equipment to really make the, make our investments in our own.
The department was very positive about it as well, uh, we did talk to, uh, me or two ago about mulching and the possible arm for that, this machine doesn't have that fat, it's not bigger than.
No.
But what it, what it did do up down there in, at the bushes and it, it did a beautiful job, we said, God, we're getting the siding and up the road.
Speaking of that though, we do have a grader, right?
Yeah.
I saw an ad the other day for mulching piece that we go on a grader.
We're kind of a mulching nineteen eighty week.
I don't know, I just saw it and I'm like, I can't bring that up.
Very cute.
Just like, yeah, I don't remember where I saw it, but I'm like.
Your only question halfway, Richard, is have, have we got any, uh, information, yeah, data back on the, uh, road service, yeah?
Oh, no, we have not, they are about halfway through, we should have a report day in November.
Right.
Contractal deadline for first.
They knew what was gonna be done this fall, I just didn't know where we stood there.
They, uh, rode the roads in September.
Yep.
Uh, later that weekend, and now they're all compiling and then building our map, so it's still, yeah.
Great, so we'll see that for, for the first of the year, is the opponent.
Uh, you'll see it December.
Okay.
Nice. And I, I think it does say to keep the speed.
Yeah, I think that is on there, actually. Anything else in public?
Sorry, I have to. We have to get that video.
Number eight, discussion action on funding requests from Common Unity Place.
My name is John Mayla, I live on Bridge Street. Thank you. Um, I am, uh, one of, one of four volunteers at Common Unity Place, which is located at one oh three Dr. Mann Road in Skowigian. Um, I'm not gonna go into it because you all have the, the stuff for you, but today, Wednesday, is our day that we service the community. Um, and it's a great indicator of what our pro- program does. Um, we service eight families today for clothing. And the, the thing that I think surprised us today is we had probably twenty new families, which is sad. Uh, and, and usually you get a lot of repeat customers, uh, a lot of new people, um, and we serviced, uh, we sold us, we gave away approximately eighty four lunch meals to people who are food insecure. Um, not all the people who get clothing can get it from you. My phone rang, I apologize that, that's one of our other programs, um, for the Common Unity Place, and that's medical equipment. That was a phone call for a wheelchair, so it happens all the time, uh, we give away about three hundred, or lend out three hundred pieces of equipment every year. Um, a, a lot of equipment, a lot of need, you know, the thing we do, uh, do, um, personal care items, diapers from newborns to adult diapers, uh, all the way through toothpaste, toothbrushes, soaps, we work with sappy. Um, on your sheet here, um, that I, I gave you, um, with all of the things from the unity place, our partners are becoming, um, very widespread, all the way from, um, obviously Shet's sappy, but, um, Foot Shepherd's food thing, United Way, um, uh, A B cap, members of Public Health, uh, on and on and on, and it's not unusual to get a call from, uh, Skowigian Behavioral Health uh, to help a patient or a client who needs either clothing. Um, we also do Salvation Army, just like Richard does here in Noradrock, we're the representative for Salvation Army, so, um, we do a lot of good for people in the community who can't help themselves, um, and we would request that, uh, um, about three percent of our, five percent of our customers come from Noradrock, uh, we do have statistics that support that. Uh, so we would just ask that you pay your fair share. Any questions?
Any idea what that number is?
It's.
Yes, I, oh, did I miss it?
Next side of the.
I, I don't love the term fair share. I'm completely honest, like, that one, it's like, it's, it's not a fair share responsibility with that, like, it is, you know, break or doing that, um. I just wanna make that clear that it's not fair share, because it's not like a municipal thing that we've signed up for and dedicated ourselves to, so.
And. What choice will they?
No.
Oh, please, Richard.
Do you seek municipal funding from any other municipality, and if so, do they provide that to you?
That's a great question, and the answer is no, we're all, uh, top is an all volunteer board. Um, and they have a very poor, um, um, uh, collection, they, they don't do a good job of going out and asking them, we do grants through United Way, Foot, uh, Shepherd, um, and a bunch of other organizations, but we are, a plan this next year, we talked to Skowigian, we talked about, you know, Elon the other day about how we can process with Skowigian. And that's very complicated, but anyway, uh, we're gonna start approaching some of the other municipalities, um, this next year, that's one of our ideas.
So we like to leave from the front, so there was no right answer to that.
Yeah.
Um, and we also don't have a petition requirement for you to come and be considered, but, um, I was the one that asked Savish and I to perp them about doing that, because even the town office in Skowigian wouldn't administer like we do here, so, um, anyway, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you, John.
Questions?
Uh last year about this time, you authorized a grant of two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars for your local philanthropy budget. That is the requesting this year. You have a remaining balance in that local philanthropy budget of a little over six thousand.
Oh, so that was gonna be my question for you, because it's left in that account.
And how many requests we have that have come in for anything? They always come in late, I know that, that's always like.
So the requests come in now to be included in our town report and our budget for next year. Uh the direction from this board to me last year was. Round five of them. If people want, they can come in, they can talk to us. And John did laughing with video and everything and and that's what it was. I'm not soliciting anymore for any donations. And unless they come and they darken our door or they reach out to us specifically, we are not considering.
Sure. Yeah.
And these funds expire and roll, they will, they will just roll laps into circles at the end of the year.
Right.
Which you don't sign, yeah.
Does somebody wanna make a motion right now?
Um I'll make a motion to give them the two thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I was again, motion is second, uh any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor? Yep, that's everyone. John, thank you.
Thank you, John, for doing that.
Um okay, uh number nine here, uh discussion action on how long property and maintenance proposals.
This is uh opinions of our yarders and senators here. We received five proposals. I, and and I have preliminarily gave one to be non-responsive. Um and I can, I'm happy to share the, I I sent it electronically to you, the low bidder of thirty-five thousand. Um it, the contents of the proposal, as you saw in your electronic packet, were uh not what we had asked for. Um they did not provide us any equipment listed or anything else, and candidly, you have to wonder if they're gonna be responsive.
Yeah.
And and how they would go forward, and everybody else is in relative good range. I set them aside. That would be something that you folks need to consider first, and then second is you have two proposers. That's Nickerson Yard, this is York's landscaping that are entitled to that five percent allowance, given the size of the contract. Well, and the purchasing policy that's currently in place.
What, I mean, what did they charge us last year?
Uh it was three.
And so they've gone three thousand down on their bid from the previous year?
That's correct. Is that a motion?
No, I'm just.
That's appreciated.
Well, and and I think that's one of those. Things that I brought up the last one is if we're gonna do this year to year and like just to keep accepting and rolling it over, they've been now, because it's competitive. Gone back three thousand?
Right.
So if we're gonna do this year to year, we, you know, stick to year to year. Is where I live there, cuz that that's odd to me that they went. They did, and then they asked for a raise and we gave it to them, but we didn't go out to bid.
Right.
And it just seems odd that they would go down knowing it's competitive.
Getting rated all right, we're sad.
Right. That's what we like about this, competitive.
Yeah, just get something on.
Right, it does, uh and I and I, it's the only Norwich Walk based business in here, uh. And it's Norwich Walk dollars we're spending here. Uh I see, I mean, you've got it in front of you, you see lower numbers there, uh. I don't, I don't know those per se, um I don't, I've not turned good or bad, either way.
Right, the Clinton business is higher if once you grant Nickerson the five percent allowance.
Right.
They are a little bitter when you give them the five percent allowance. By five hundred bucks.
Right. And I. I'm pleased with the job they're doing. I I'd uh.
There were ten titles for five percent allowance, up or down?
Down.
Down.
Right, so it would lessen their number. To a bid from someone that's not tied it to that, uh. Which lands that matter?
Forty-two, seven fifty.
Maybe still pay on the forty-five, it's just when you compare apples to apples, if you will, uh they get that deduction by being a a local business, uh. And and York's is a quality company as well, uh. But for myself, I. I'm comfortable with Nickerson's, uh like I, like I said, we had hiccups early on, but this was. I don't even know, four years ago, five years ago. Um since then, they've been extremely responsive to our ass, whether it's. Hey, the ball fields need to be mowed for the upcoming tournament, uh. Right, I really, I I feel that they've been doing a pretty quality job.
Well, totally quality. Like, if you didn't realize, you always.
It is.
Or is it really? Well, that is, oh, no, I didn't realize that, no kidding. It's quite a hop, skip and a jump, I mean, if you will.
No, so he's he's done this for many years, uh had a long time, we have got out of it for a while, went back into it a couple of years ago. So.
Um you can catch them.
So might as well move to accept the low bid with the five percent allowance. Move the second all, yeah?
Yeah, uh you want a second on that? Anybody? I'll second. Okay, there's a motion of a second, uh any discussion on that?
Oh, which which one was it?
That's Nickerson's.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only discussion and because it is there is that we're going down if we're gonna do this year to year. That we don't just roll it over again because obviously we just saved three thousand bucks by making it competitive.
I I can't remember who forced it, but.
So from year to year, you know, it's it.
Yeah.
And it's take situations like this to make that happen.
Yep.
I think the contract that we proposed allows for the one-year extension upon mutual agreement.
Mutual agreement, but that one had, right, but that one had gone for three years.
Yeah.
Oh, without being able to bid.
Right.
And and that could be the board's fault, but this just shows that we probably should put it up to bid.
Yeah.
Every time.
More more often than we do, just so that we're getting. But they can do it this year when prices are higher for three thousand less than they did last year.
Yes.
Since they wanna keep the the business, so.
Yeah.
But wait, it didn't rain much. I didn't, don't believe it had to work anyways, it was hot and they just.
Year to year, you don't know that, what's gonna happen. Yeah.
Uh okay, any further discussion? Uh seeing none, all those in favor? That's everybody, uh. There's some safe, that's nice. Uh number ten here, discussion action on proposal for public works pickup truck.
Oh, boy.
This is the red pickup truck that they got from the sewer department uh a few years back. Um and what we've never done is put it out for auction, put it out for bid. Um in a little bit more formal setting, it's a relatively. Low ticket vehicle for us to be doing this with, but there's really no strings attached. Uh we have the right to accept or reject them in our bids. The contractor, the the auctioneer agent, if you will, uh will come out and take pictures, uh. And build this ad for us. We don't pay anything for it. The buyer pays the fee based on the bidding list. So it's kind of a great situation. We can leave it open as long as we want or short as we want. And obviously, they would guide us in that. Um we can also, we also have the ability to counter. And there's no cost to us if we just say, no, we didn't get anything that we want, um we're gonna deny all bids. So I thought that this was somebody that we've been familiar with, uh the fire department has kicked around using a company like this in the past, and I don't think they've ever got it.
Not for vehicles, we did it for some.
But I thought that given its value, it might be a reasonable time to score something like this. And maybe get a little bit more, what we've been getting for vehicles in the last four or five years has been kind of embarrassing, kind of to where you're like. We should have just kept it, for all that to open ourselves, so.
What do we change, like an estimated value of the vehicles?
Yeah.
It needs work, but it runs.
Yeah.
It's double two-wheel drive.
What's the mileage in a year?
Years in a seven.
You don't have to be exactly.
And our mileage is, I'll say. Eighty-five thousand. Ten?
Yeah.
Yeah, ten thousand, we're not gonna give it to them.
So we probably got, it probably under eighty.
Yeah, yeah.
Seven. We can get a couple grand out of it.
So we're just looking for like that motion to go forward with.
So author it, we just sign a contract with these folks to disclose it.
Yeah, uh motion is second, second again, second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Not that I was forcing him to be invaded, I was just saying.
Look at you, a grumpus, right?
Uh okay, uh number eleven here, uh discussion action on fire department purchases, truck accessories. Vintee, please.
So I was here two weeks ago and I said to expect this, um maybe you forgot, but at the time, I talked about it. Twenty thousand dollar bill, but um. I think you have this two-page paper and uh it's a total of about seventeen thousand or more. Um so what we did is we. We spent the better part of the last two months, uh this spare time going back and. Refreshing ourselves on what we bought in April of twenty twenty-three, right? Because that was when we bought this fire truck. I haven't gotten it yet, but that's what we thought. Um and okay, so what was included and then, uh you know, in that purchase? And then we created another list, which was, uh what can we reuse uh from the. Um existing truck that we have, and that's largely handles axes. Things like that. And then, okay, what do we need to buy? Cuz there's always stuff to buy when you get in front of it. And one of the big items um is nozzles. Because we uh haven't bought any nozzles in a long time. And we're, we have some now that need repair, can't be repaired. Um and the second bigger item is uh. Milwaukee battery tools. If you remember, we we saved the ten grand on buying a hydraulic generator. For the fire truck, instead we'd make an investment in battery tools instead, right? So um. I had Daryl and and the guys put together this list. And there's a couple items there that exceed Richard's purchasing authority. Uh that would need to come to the board and we said, well, you know what, let's just put it all together in one package and come to the board. So the request would be. Um for the seventeen, uh twenty, sixteen roughly. Uh to be out of our fire uh capital equipment account. So this, this is fire, this is money that we've got. Saved up for exactly this purpose. This is not something that we're adding to the tax base for or asking you to pull out or some special. Uh account. The two bigger ticket items, I'll talk about those for a sec. The nozzles, I mean, those are TFT nozzles, we've always had TFT nozzles. The the. Fire tech and safety during Windbrook, they're the largest TFT dealer in New England. We've always bought our novels there. We've always got our nozzle service there when possible. Nobody can touch their prices, that's where you go if you're, if you're in the business and you need a TFT nozzle, you go to Windbrook. That's what you do. Um if if we've looked online, there's some higher prices out there. You're you're gonna support the local guy, especially if he has the lowest price. And then a little bit opposite on the second page. So we did go to Hammond Lumber and and got a tool package for it. I asked a couple of you after the meeting last time. And it was sixty-five hundred. We did go um to Bangor to what used to be NH Bragg, but. They were bought a few years ago by a company called Rexel, which is a big international distributor. So if you look at the NH Bragg. Office in Bangor, it's kind of a mini Grainger, if you will, uh for, you know, Central Maine, uh Eastern Maine. And uh owned by a company named Rexel, and we asked them to put together the same tool package. And they were smart and got with the Milwaukee rep, and they ended up with some gift baskets, this and holiday specials, that. And before you know it, you know, we ended up with more batteries and had to buy less and, you know, bundles, right? And you've all seen the bundles that Home Depot knows you don't wanna talk about. And save quite a bit of money doing that and actually gonna end up with a few extra batteries that we even asked for. Uh and saved uh, you know, over over a thousand bucks there, so um. My request to you would be to just approve this list. I believe it will be complete. I don't think there's anything additional. If there is, certainly will come within Richard's authority of, you know, a little thousand. Uh probably way less than that, I mean, uh quite a bit of time went into this. And um this should be everything we need to finish the swing. The truck will be here. Mid-December is my best guess. We will owe them a check for four hundred and sixty-three thousand at that time. And Peter will, so that done, mid-December? And right, and uh and so this is the the addition, an addition to that.
What was the full price on that?
That's it.
That's it.
Yeah, was it?
I hope so. All right, so you buy the next one. Uh and for what it's worth, we'll pull this past year, pull seventeen thousand out of capital and equipment and. And if you're concerned about that, I was, right? So I said, okay. What do we have in capital equipment? What are we gonna spend? Four sixty-three, another seventeen? What are we gonna add to it? What are the next purchases? And are we on track to buy that next truck in twenty thirty-one? And the answer is yes. Not by a lot, but yes. And I can lay that out for you in a separate meeting, but I I would expect to cover that in my capital review, founder town meeting. Uh typically. So we we are on track, even with buying a new um pickup next year. They're replaced twenty-four, right? So replacing the two thousand Dodge.
It'd be interesting to see if this auction piece works out, to see if that truck is a candidate, if that.
Part of his thinking right there, you mentioned it, but is we've got. This coming year, um the fire department potentially has two here to see it.
Right, be interesting to see how this works. Uh motion, pardon?
I'll make a motion.
Any discussion? Uh none, other than I appreciate you guys taking the time to try to get the best prices on things that you can. I mean, all these items are. Ungodly expensive.
Don't you wanna help with that, the money to bid for?
I know he does.
Barely.
Right. I know it's not viable, but I know it's contained.
This will leave about eighteen thousand dollars.
Sorry, announce for this year to NASA, just that.
But you say an app you subtract a four sixty-three.
Right.
And if this seventeen, I'm using round numbers here, but that's four eighty, right? And I get a little over five hundred thousand there.
I like that it's not an additional add, so I'm.
And we knew.
Yeah, we did, we did, we had.
Which communication is still, so we appreciate that.
Okay, uh wait, uh any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? And that's everybody. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Uh right here, number twelve, uh discussion action on ethics, conflict of interest ordinance.
Talked about this at the last meeting, you don't have anything in your package, you can turn me page, I made a good, um. I I made a pretty good start. Uh I'm gonna send it to you probably tonight or in the morning to start looking at and start poking holes in it. Um what do you want to see extra? What do you wanna see less or fine tune? And then that will give me a better working document when we get back in two weeks. Um because we're getting back to the time if we wanted to be ordinance to help govern elected officials. Then we need to get that button up soon so we can get on the ballot for March. Um I think the other things to think about as we start talking about ordinances in one is uh any referendum questions that you guys are thinking or. Questions that might well be considered, whether it would be just one or anything else, um that you would like to see on refer. That we are starting to plan for that.
With the sewer piece being by referendum?
The last time we amended it, just on the floor that we.
Okay. Uh well.
First time you've been slipping, but okay.
Not bad.
No, not bad, not bad.
Uh okay, uh number thirteen here, discussion action on poll permit application. Central Main Power.
Yeah, this is a a new pole out on um, I'll say up our main street. But it's not really, it's way up there, outwinding Hill twenty-two thousand feet. Um and so anyway, it's just a motion aside, for location for for Central Main Power TDS.
So move, second motion, second, is for a new home or?
Just a whole, it's a new driveway, but it doesn't include any rest of the new driveway.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, uh motion in second, I've seen no discussion, all those in favor? That's everybody. Uh number fourteen here, uh discussion action on donations.
Uh we have received donations in the amount of three hundred dollars so far in memory of Anita Libby uh to benefit Norwich Rock.
I would like to want you to accept those donations, yes, and thank you.
Second, motion in second, uh any discussion? Second, motion second, uh, name discussion. See none, all those in favor? That's everyone. Well, thank you for the donations here. Uh, number fifteen here, discussion action on proposed amendments of the subdivision ordinance.
Uh, the planning board has worked through this ordinance, uh, and you have the markup here, so you see all the live changes in the document, um. Happy to take part and provide feedback to the planning board. If you need to adjust that, they will leave this over the course of the last six or seven months. Um, and this is where it was settled. They do not really put any additional uh, restrictions on. Not the ordinance it's, it's right based on um, where we were before, there's updates to a lot of the things that are in there. Uh, Charlie, do you have anything to add?
So the only thing that I would, um, you know, it's very specific on the place. Not deemed like suitable for it. I think that, you know, in here, it's, it's basically it's looking at, you know, like water levels, water marks and like things like that. Where we are investing and we're trying to sort of revitalize and regenerate our downtown, like is this maybe a time and place where we put something in there to not. Certain size to know we're downtown that area, um, just seeing the problems that we've had with generators with waste, um. Not being removed, making sure that anything that comes in, there's not only out of the parking, there's like waste disposal, there's, you know. But. Are we putting enough measures in for these types of units? Like if we get someone that's from away and they don't care, like. Are we going to run into some of the issues that we've been having with some of these other multi-units in downtown? And. If we have the ability to create some provisions that make it so we're not gonna be in that spot, I think that this would be a good time to do that. But they can't even have one if they don't have proper parking, they don't have um, plans, garbage disposal, that kind of stuff.
So that's in here, I'm pretty much our subdivision ordinance, I think we were talking.
Yeah, we.
Pretty much a great in a way that doesn't allow you to do it in any dense area of town because of the block size of the town.
There is, there's a required size or the minimum law size.
So the ones we have are just grandfather related in that side.
So the ones that are there are, yep, uh.
We change anything in ordinance and take some of that stuff out.
Yeah.
Take out grandfather and make it new and make it easier and stuff.
Well, we changed the speed limit on the road yesterday, we were going fast to. Great for taking today.
Well, do we have the ability to try to get all the trash and noise? No, we don't.
Can't change the lot size to say that we need to fix it, yeah.
But what about disposal of like garbage and things like that?
That's general, but. Right, if there's trash, there's litter and we'd handle that in cooperation with the government.
Just trying to think of ways that we can.
Control what goes into our downtown. I, I, I understand what you're getting at, uh. And you're certainly not wrong by any means. I mean, I, I think we all have the best interest in controlling what happens with our downtown, um.
That being one of the organs and stuff.
I think that would fall into uh, just a different.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there's.
The property maintenance order, we've talked about bringing that back to the table.
Which does touch.
Well, they have to bring in plans for all sorts of other stuff. I think that any one that's going in that's new that has a certain number, I mean, if we can enact things that like. You have to prove that there will be dumpsters there, that there will be, you know, off street, like. Just whatever we can put in the front end so we don't end up with what we have now twenty years from now, I think it'll be.
I, I think you're right, and I, I think it would be cool of us to look into that, uh, and maybe for one of our next meetings, we schedule a, uh. A slot here that look into that and suppose plausible, what we can do, what we're allowed to do.
Let's make it stricter and further to get multi-unit. Things in North Rock versus make it easier. Like I think that we want the right people, you know, like. There are pretty many ways to make sure the outside of the building looks nice and that there people were there. Yes, like, I mean, we just like. We, I'm gonna be like, I don't want any more slumps. We don't need any more trash holes in this town. Like it needs to be a decent, nice like apartment building that stays maintained and look nice and it's not gonna just be a dump.
So, yeah, no, so thi- this doesn't loosen it. It's subdivision where this doesn't loosen up. Many of the restrictions are already in place.
I'm saying this is the opportunity to put in more, that's what I'm saying.
Right, but your multi-unit buildings. Yes, they could come under this, but then it's the enforcement mechanism back end of it. Um, it, and I think that's maybe where we're at. I think what you're looking for, most people are looking for is that. Property maintenance component. How does that building look? How does the property look? And that's been the difficult sell in the past, and that's something that is for, is for, is that they wanna revisit. I just blocked it down and we need to talk about that at the next meeting.
And I, I didn't notice and it could be in there and I just didn't see it, but. Anything that can sort of negate any sort of financial property value impact to others. Or I know there's things for abutters about like the natural, like whatever, but like. I mean, somebody that goes in. If that goes next to me, if that can make my property value go down by what's there, are we addressing that? I wanna make sure that we are.
In terms of you live next to a field now, now you're going next to a subdevelopment?
Yeah, like, or it's just you have a single-family house that creates a residential-like environment. Now you've got sort of a, sort of rotating door of a large multi-unit that changes the dynamic of a neighborhood.
There is there a piece about, uh. With the approval process here about negative impact on abutting properties.
Yes, but it's not clear, but yeah.
No compensation. No, but that's way into the approval of the subdivision about the impact on abutting properties.
Yes, yeah.
So there are. Okay. I just make sure that we're protecting like. Our small-town neighborhoods and things like that and why not, you know? We're not slapping these bad boys up all the place. I don't think that's something that we necessarily know.
I think you're right on point. I think a lot of people in town, I think, share that same feeling, uh, and it's really just the best way to go about that.
Yeah.
Uh, so I think we definitely slate some time here within a, within this year. I don't think we have a lot pressing going forward, but. Besides budgets, uh, and maybe we can schedule that in and actually go over it and look what some options are. Uh, without creating more problem, legal problems for ourselves. So, yeah.
Could you something? The rewards, yeah. I, I, I've come to understand from some of the people I've talked with. Some of the towns in like Canada, they do something like. Reason why their places look so nice is because they actually reward. You, you, they charge you more, have a fight crap. That your taxes are. Based on. What you look like, you're, you know, by the way, there's no life stuff, you know, we say, geez, that place looks good, but they. They need a better tax rate than you do over here. To you bring this from upstanding, your taxes will go down if you bring this top. So you could you do something?
That's it. I, I've never heard of that. That's actually, yeah, interesting. I think it's a bit opposite the nicer, I think.
Is here, that would help.
And we are, and that's why there's sounds like you can have it look rural and then they'll have certain things. It's very, it's very pragmatic in how they sign up.
Maybe a reward.
Yeah, they'll decide you can only have five tiny buildings in town for that. Yeah, maybe you should control that.
I do, but that's a good idea.
Reward for bringing up.
Canada does that brilliantly.
Yeah, and it's getting more, making your property better, helping everybody else, and it should get a concern, it could be a topic of conversation.
It really is. It's like they have, it can be this much commerce, it can be this much residential, or it can be this, I mean, and it's. Once you're at that, it doesn't. That means that you don't end up overrunning one certain thing. It is very specific and.
Yeah, okay, yeah, uh, no, I, we'll slate some time here. That's a good, I, that's all good, uh. But for our subdivision ordinance, that's been amended here, uh. Seems like it's all only up and up. Um, I have reviewed multiple of it and I've. I agree with what's in there.
The number that we approved, the amended version of the. Subdivision ordinances.
So multiple, second, uh, any further discussion?
We just have the holding force when officer, that's why we're making sure everyone complies.
I think you're in like you do, so. Right on, okay, uh, all those in favor? That's everybody. Uh, okay, uh, right here, number sixteen, discussion action on proposed amendments to the sewer use ordinance.
This came out of sewer motion, uh, one of the things that they discussed with the people in uniform. Uh, they also talked about, you know, the point of connection, the materials used to connect it, and they wanted it pulled out so you'll see, um. Quite ways in, we removed a lot of language and we said from flowers to phone book. Uh, so that we don't need to, we need to upgrade that and if somebody wants to make it better, then we'll be glad or whatnot, that they are able to provide, um. And, and that's pretty much um, the gist of it all. There were, there were concerns about that. There were a couple smaller, we did changes and.
So on page seven of this, where the connections, is the red mean that's coming out? So it no longer will be the responsibility of the owner? And the owner sold expense from this next, so is that coming out or is that?
That's all coming out.
Okay, alright, so we budgeted to. Incur that.
Is there, there should be additional language in there.
Yeah, so we put the owners contract for the connection, so I'll provide the talent, fifty percent insurance for work in any town right away. Three thousand final connection to the sewer network shall be made under supervision of the superintendent or visitor does it need? So I just.
What section do you mean? I'm sorry.
It's seven and the second one down, the red one. I just wanted, if there was something that was changing, how we were charging something, I just wanted to be more clear on that.
Uh, right, sewer stops at the. Well, at the street. It's still the landowner from there to your.
Alright, I just, when I first looked at it, I was like, wait, are we now having the landowner pay for it? I want to try under.
Right, I, you guys, I haven't actually read through all of this, uh.
So it's seven four, the language that will exist is said. So it's further down.
Okay.
All costs and expenses instant to the installation and connection of the building sewer shall be borne by the owner. And then it provides the provisions where they identify.
So it's just sort of like we've done an information there, that's why it's written in the.
That looks for the insurance. Right, that's for the contractor providing the three hundred thousand dollars. Sure, so to do the.
Does that just mean like if they really like farcal it up that we don't have any insurance that unfair hold on?
Right, right, right now, I mean, generally we don't. Follow through on making progress when somebody does that, that we actually have that one follow us as a native shore.
Okay, alright, then I will move to approve the amended.
I wasn't at the last meeting. Yeah, I'm just so, you know, it's a new requirement, that's what it is.
Move to approve the amended sewer use ordinances.
Second, move from the second. Uh, any discussion on that? See none, all those in favor? That's everyone. Uh, number seventeen here, discussion action on financial services authorization resolution.
This is a formality that one of our institutions has asked us to follow through with. Uh, because we have decision-making on accounts or whatnot, um, every time we open a new account, uh, with friends, when they're gonna ask us to review one of these. Uh, and so when we had tax revenues come in, I opened up a CD for half a mil uh, over there, trying to keep things equitable. Uh, and so anyway, they need us to view to approve operating us to handle those funds. Other than that, this board has to review every transaction um, that happens.
So what are you looking to work for?
Uh, voting to uh, sign the financial services office as a.
So.
So motion, uh, second, uh. Discussion, well, none other than, you know, thank you for bearing that responsibility for me. So all those in favor? And that's everybody.
Uh, appointments, please.
I move to add appointments to the agenda. Number second.
Motion on second, uh, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor? That's everyone.
We have President Heaven Gilbert, who has expressed the willingness to take on a role of arts committee member. That would be effective today for April twenty twenty-six.
I will move to approve that. Or such a.
Yeah.
Appoint that, point the person.
Motion second, uh, any discussion? None other than thank you for stepping up, others in favor? And that's everybody. You have anything else for the business? Does the board have anything for other business?
No, no, I guess I will move to go into executive session, I propose, or not, except the session.
Yes.
We're gonna sign that.
Yes. Yes, that was the second motion, a second, uh, any discussion? Seeing none, all of in favor? Thanks for coming, folks.
Thanks for coming, folks. Okay, uh, number twenty here, discussion action on settlement agreement, uh, and general lease for well at map four lot two.
I will make a motion to approve the settlement agreement in the general release.
There is a motion, second. Uh, any discussion for the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, that is everyone. Uh, or do you need signatures on that, or are you, that's just me? Okay.
And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, motion on the second, uh, any discussion? All those in favor, excellent, right, and thank you guys.